Yeah, for sure.
Does that get seen better far away now?
Yeah.
But it's still blurry like this.
The mayor.
That's right. The mayor.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that very much.
Isn't interesting.
That's Adams.
It's very.
Can we get the clerk to turn to my back? There it is. I want to welcome everybody. This is our last city council meeting of the year. And I want to thank you all for coming and to listen to everything that we try to do as we close out our year. But one of the most important things that we do is think about and work with individuals around our community who are working with those that need to help the most, and that's the homeless. Tomorrow evening is the longest day of the year. And annually, we have a memorial. And we're going to do it again this year, are we not, up at the Capitol? And so, we honor those who have been homeless and who have passed on. And we hope that through the help of everybody in our community, and especially this individual right here to my right, who has been working on this now 13 years, Joppa has been helping those around our community who are homeless and helping them get what they need to get through the day, to get from Tuesday to Wednesday and on through the year, and hopefully give them the other help that they need to get the help and the support to move on to becoming productive members of society again and to have a life that is comfortable and that they can have a place to call their own. But annually, we do a proclamation, and I'm going to present it to Joe. But Joe, do you want to say a couple of words before we get started, and then I'll read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our city manager and to our council members who are working tirelessly to help end homelessness here in our community. So the Iowa Homeless Memorial, as the mayor said, it's a community-wide event that we do every year in conjunction with the National Coalition for the Homeless to remember people that have died homeless, to honor them as human beings, and then to recommit ourselves to preventing future deaths by ending homelessness. And so, that'll be at the state Capitol tomorrow night. You're all welcome to join us. It's 30 minutes. It's out in the cold. It's an outdoor event on the west Capitol Terrace, so dress warmly. And it's just an honor to be with you again this year to conduct this event and to remember those that have died homeless. And we're working to get everybody off the streets as a community. So, thank you.
All right. Our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed low-income adults and children in Des Moines, the spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding our commitment to end homelessness. And whereas December 21st has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council, and whereas Joppa organizes the Iowa Homeless Memorial each year to remember those who have died homeless, to honor them as human beings and fellow residents, and to prevent future homeless deaths by recommitting ourselves to provide fundamental solutions to homelessness. Whereas during this season of generosity and sharing, residents of Des Moines are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas in remembering those who have died on the streets, the cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent, is the city's commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our residents of Des Moines, hereby proclaim December 21st, 2021, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. In recognition of the people who have died homeless in and around Des Moines, we hereby ask all residents to take a moment of silence in remembrance and encourage our residents to support all local efforts to eliminate homelessness in our community. Thank you, and Joe, keep up the great work. And we'll see you tomorrow night. Thank you. We'll start our meeting here shortly. I'm looking.
Yes, they get to it easily. Yeah, yeah, that's on. Linda's doing this the first time.
I don't have it. So we're running a little late as we've had a sort of end-of-the-year recognition of one of our outgoing city council members. And so, we are starting a little bit late. We are going to quickly have a Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board of Meeting right now. So we'll open that up, and due to the increased community transmission of COVID, I'm going to say, as I have, we've implemented a face-covering requirement in our city buildings, and the requirement applies to both the staff and visiting public and includes attendance in our city council meetings. If you don't have one, we're more than happy and are able to provide you with one. So I will ask the clerk to please call the role of the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. Voice vote, good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none. Item passes. Item three is approving of the renewal request for the extension of the Designated Housing Allocation Plan, Board Communication Number 21-558.
Move.
Yeah, item's been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none. Would you poll the council, please? Well, it looks like we can vote. Machine's on.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. And could we get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none. Municipal Housing Agency Board, Governing Board is adjourned. We will quickly move to our city council meeting. I want everybody to know that in our city council meetings, we will not tolerate disruptions of our business meetings. And persons wishing to attend this meeting, we want to remind everybody the following. We welcome germane comments from the public at their appropriate times, but this is a council business meeting, and the council needs to conduct the people's business and conduct the council. We do have rules that are validly adopted under Iowa law, and those rules will be followed. Anyone engaging in disruptive conduct in the city council chambers or the great hall will result in those being disrupted, being ordered to leave the building, and being denied readmittance for the remainder of the day. No person will be permitted to stand in the council chamber during council sessions between or on the audience seats, and the council members except the persons addressing the council at the speaker's microphone and only after being recognized. All persons desiring to address the council may do so only when recognized, but the council reserves the right to limit the speaker's time and the order in which the speakers may address. Under Section 2-70 of the city code, it is illegal to interrupt any person who is addressing the council except by a council member, and is illegal to disrupt the council meeting. Everyone in attendance has First Amendment rights, and any disruptive conduct by one person or group that impinges on the rights of others present is, will be considered disruptive conduct, and we want everybody to know again, it won't be tolerated. If the meeting is disrupted, the public speaking portion of the meeting may be moved to the next in-person meeting, which is not disrupted, and those who disrupt the meeting will not be called on during the meeting. And again, they'll be ordered to leave the building and may not, and in the end, may be cited or arrested for disorderly conduct, trespass, or interfering with the good order of the meeting, or any other applicable charges. We'll move on now to our meeting. Let's call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, that's a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Item's been moved. I will say that on the consent, 18 was added. It's a water reclamation authority appointment for 2022. Item 20 was added. It's a neighborhood development corporation board of directors' appointees for the calendar year of 2022. 21 again was added. That's a DART appointee for the calendar year of 2022. Item 22 was withdrawn. The appointment for the WRA withdrawn until council member-elect has been sworn in. Item 24 was added. Aging Resources of Central Iowa Board of Directors' appointees for calendar year of 2022. 28I was added. It's the Access Advisory Board reappointment by Councilmember Voss. Item 41 was removed from the consent. This item was moved out of consent and is now item 68C. Item 68B was added. It's an abatement of nuisance, public nuisance, at 323 East Jackson Avenue. And on the regular agenda, 68C was moved from consent. It's consent to the assignment and assumption in restated urban renewal development agreement. With that, do we still have a motion?
Move approval.
Okay. Would you poll the council, please, or let's, let us vote? Item's been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 67. These are routine items and will be enacted by a one-roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, either a council member or the public, requests an item be removed and could be considered separately. Okay. Item five, county votes no. Item 7B, councilmember Gray wishes to speak. Item 8C, councilmember Gatto and Westergaard vote no. Item nine, Gatto and Westergaard vote no. 43, Mandelbaum wishes to speak. 53, Gray wishes to speak. 54, Mandelbaum wishes to speak.
On move approval.
Okay, it's been moved. Madam Clerk, are there any items that were requested to be removed by the public?
No, Your Honor.
Okay.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. That'll take us to item 7B. All right. Because it's after five, we're going to do that, do these items after we do the hearings. So we will quickly move to the hearings. Tonight, just for everybody, there's four zoning items. Those are items 69 and 73 through 75. We also have one vacation in a correction hearing, several conveyance hearings, one lease hearing, one type-two design appeal, and several public improvement hearings, and a hearing on the city's reprecincting ordinances. As a reminder for the zoning items only, which are 69, 73, 4, and 5, we will hear from the parties in interest first and then the general public. The parties in interest are, for the zoning items, include only the applicant for the rezoning and those living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, to whom the city has sent notices. After all the parties in interest have commented, we will open it up to any member of the public for germane comments. To aid in the recognizing the parties in interest to zoning to speak, I will ask that everyone else not step up to the microphone unless they are that applicant or live within that 250 feet and received a mailed notice of the rezoning. Anyone who approaches the mic before it is their time will be compared to that mailing list, and if you're not on the list, will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting and will be required to leave the building. So please, wait until I call on the general public for the zoning items, or you will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting. After all the parties in interest have been called upon, general public comment at not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes will be called upon for the germane public comment unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane public comments. For the precinct and work boundary amendments hearings, any interested person may make germane comments at not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of 30 minutes unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane comments or a cessation of comments. For all other hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments at not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane public comments or when the comments cease. As a reminder, on the public improvement hearings, only comments as to the plans, the specifications, the form of documents, and the engineer's estimate in the lowest bidder designation will be considered germane. All other comments will be considered non-germane unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane public comments. So with that, I think we can begin, right, Mr. Attorney? All right. So our first hearing item is item 68. Item 68 are items related to the proposed Genesis Health Club Sports Complex. On appeal by Genesis Health Club Sports Complex, S E L L C, of denial of type-two design alternatives for site plan located at 1111 East Army Post Road, choose alternate A or alternate B. Second amendment to the amended and restated urban renewal development agreement with Mace Ridge South Ridge Mall LLC, the Mace Ridge Partnership LP, and Genesis Health Club Sports Complex, S E L L C, for the redevelopment and repurposing of the South Ridge Mall to include a Genesis Health Club and multi-sport facility. This item will be withdrawn if A is not approved. C is a consent by assignment and assumption of amended and restated urban renewal development agreements with Mace Ridge South Ridge Mall LLC, and Mace Ridge Partnership LP, and Genesis Health Club Sports Complex, S E L L C, approving the amendment to the conceptual development plan for redevelopment and repurposing of South Ridge Mall to include a Genesis Health Club and multi-sports facility. So... Are these the?
The only hearing item is on 68A. 68 and 68A, B and C are there for convenience of the council.
Okay, but what's alternate B?
Well, alternate, uh, alternate A is to deny the type-two design alternatives that Genesis is asking for and approve and uphold. What the P and Z came up with, an alternative B would be to approve the proposed type-two design. So that's what the hearing is on.
Can you, can you say that again? Because I think Scott just went to check. So, alternative A is to allow?
Good. I'm going to ask the attorney to read the, the alternative A, and then also the alternative B.
Okay, I'll go back to alternative A there. You can see that's to deny the type-two design alternatives as requested by Genesis, and instead to approve the type-two design alternatives that P and Z approved and recommended. And alternative B would be to approve the type-two design alternatives that Genesis requested as they're described above in the preamble to the resolution. And then council makes different findings of fact based upon the results of the hearing and the council decision on where they want to go.
But, so if, if B is approved, I'm confused. Letter B here, we would have to vote on that. This says the item will be withdrawn if A is not approved. I, I, I'm really confused how this is worded now.
If there's not a resolution on part A, then, then B needs to be withdrawn.
Well, I want to move alternative B, I believe, to allow Genesis to do what they've asked to do.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, well, that's...
If you do that, then you would also move B. But if, if...
You're approving item A, not alternative A.
Right.
You got to remember, there's...
So we're approving item A, and your recommendation is alternative B?
Of item A, correct.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. Thank you.
But first have to have the hearing.
All right. So on this item, we will... Kate, would you switch back, please?
268. That's fine.
Let's put 68 up, please. So again, these are items related to Genesis Health Club Sports Complex for essentially South Ridge Mall. So we're going to open it up to ask the public, do you have any comments that you would like to make regarding this request? And again, this is by Genesis. Yes, go ahead, step up.
Okay.
That's right, you just hold it. That's okay.
Okay. So part of the reason why I first started coming to the city council meetings is because I drive for the community fridges once a week, and I noticed how zoning requirements are being weaponized against the community fridges. So that's why I kind of got interested into looking at some of these requirements and how the city code works. So I started looking into this one about Genesis, which I'm trying to make like a larger point besides justice.
Excuse me, before you proceed, can you give your name, please?
Yeah. My name is Natalie Harwood, and I live in Ward 1. So part of the coding, like the city code exemption that you're talking about, is that it provides a certain amount of money for programs for disadvantaged use, which isn't defined. Besides the fact they're saying it's less than half of the median income of the area. So, this programming starts at $50,000 for the first year and goes up over time to a couple hundred thousand. But, if you read the proposal, it states that it will be used to offer discounted memberships to lower-income families. To me, this seems like a way for them to still profit while claiming to make an investment. Those families might not have paid the enrollment fee in a membership at all if not for the discount offer, so it'd also make new clients for the gym. They're claiming the total of these discounts together counts as programming. They don't clarify what happens if they don't get to that $50,000. Do they still get credit for offering it? Could I finish? My comments.
Okay, do we have another speaker? Anyone else want to speak?
Hello, my name is Adam. I do see him pronouncing, I live in Ward 3, zip code 50309. I'm gonna pick up where Natalie left off. Is there really $50,000, $200,000 that will actually be spent on memberships, or is that just the available funds that they will keep it, they will keep and get credit as long as it is offered? How are they held accountable that they're actually promoting this to people who might need it or qualify? They don't include anything in the proposal about how they will be accountable to the city, whether that money must be spent or just available to be spent, and whether they'll provide documentation proving they are currently spending, they're actually spending the money on what they say they are. I'm picking on Genesis to make a larger point about granting TIF and waiving beautification requirements for certain people, or any other investment of public money in exchange that they offer some kind of charitable spending, or are we asking for accountability? I'm requesting we ask more questions about this kind of proposal and make the accountability metrics more clear. Also, Genesis offers tanning in their clubs, and I think for $7.4 million in TIF from the public with the promise of youth programs, we can request they not offer that service because it's a carcinogen, and youth especially shouldn't have access to it.
Taylor Weber, Ward 3. So, echo those comments, and I'll get back to those. On the part A, I think you should choose alternative A. Again, we're, again, allowing another corporation, a large company with a bunch of money, to circumvent issues in our zoning code that many of the council members have acknowledged exists. And it seems that only large companies with lots of money can navigate them, and so things like community fridges that are helping people don't get this kind of exception to be able to navigate this process. That's really unfortunate. I think you should choose A. There's more trees for the environment, there's reasons that you do those parking lot easements. I also echo, it feels like we're getting like a payoff, where they're putting up more money now for their so-called incentive programs to then allow us to have this exemption for them. And I know there's not many organizations that can pay $125,000 just because now they need another exemption. And that's really unfortunate, so...
I have a little question, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anybody else? All right, council, any comments?
I'll move 68A, alternative B.
All right. Any comments on that move that you want to make?
No.
Okay.
Your Honor, that's four yes, three no.
I'll move 68B and C.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, let's move to item 69. Item 69 is a zoning request, so it's on a request from CFD Properties LLC to amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow future land use designation for real property located known as 2300 East 14th Street from neighborhood mixed-use and low-medium density to industrial and to rezonate said property from MX1 Mixed Use District to I1 Industrial District to allow the use that includes outdoor storage. Plan and zoning commission recommends denial. Choose alternative A, deny rezoning, or alternative B to continue the hearing until 110 of 21. We'll go ahead and...
Your Honor, that should be 22, that's a typo.
Yep. So January 10th of '22. So, let's go ahead, council, any comments before we open it up, public? Okay, let's go ahead and ask... Okay. Could, yeah, could somebody hand her the mic? And this is rezoning, so is there a party of interest? Don't make any comment yet. Is there any parties in interest in the area, either the applicant or persons living within the 250 feet? All right, hearing none, let's open it up.
Heather Armstrong, Ward 2, do you think we need another storage unit facility? Because most of these places don't make the money. We need more grocery stores in the area. There should be a grocery store, not another storage facility place.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to make comment on this? There we go.
My name is Adam, Ward 3, 50309. Yeah, I would just like to say that if planning and zoning is recommending denial, I hope that we do hold up a denial here, since on other items, we are not listening to our zoning code or our planning and zoning board. I think let's not set it as a trend for the meeting. Let's deny this.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, council?
I'll move item 69A to deny.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 70, which is on a conveyance of a permanent easement for Water Main right-of-way in property located south of and adjoining Observatory Road to the Des Moines Waterworks. Again, we'll open that up. Does anyone want to make any comments germane to this item regarding the Des Moines Waterworks getting a permanent easement here? Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 70.
Item 70 has been moved. Call.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 71 is on the conveyance of city-owned property at Southeast 43rd and Vandelia Road to Crossroads Cold Storage LLC. CJ Morton is the officer for $416,020. This was council communication number 21-568. Again, we'll ask if there's any germane comments by the general public on this item. One minute to speak, yes?
CJ Morton, I'm the CFO for Des Moines Cold Storage. We've been headquartered in Des Moines since 1910. In 2014, we purchased 20 acres down in the southeast Agri-Merchant Park to build a new headquarters, a new warehouse, 110,000 square feet. And in 2019, we added 70,000 square feet to that, with a total investment of about $30 million. We're looking to secure the property behind us for future growth.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for CJ?
CJ, we appreciate the investment you put into our city.
Thank you very much for your support.
Yeah, absolutely. I will happily move item 71.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 72 is on correcting the vacation of the north-south alley right-of-way located west of and adjoining 1010 13th Street, and to issue a corrected quitclaim deed to Joppa Cheatham Park LLC. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by our city manager and requires six votes. Again, we'll ask if anyone from the general public would like to make a comment regarding this Joppa work.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 72A and 72B.
Right, item's been moved. Amanda?
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 73 is on a request from NAP Homes LLC to rezonate property locally known as 4402 Douglas Avenue from MX1 Mixed Use District to MX3 Mixed Use District to allow the development of a restaurant with a drive-through use subject to conditions. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. We'll ask if there's, on this, it's a rezoning, if there are any parties in interest who are present. Seeing none, we'll ask if there's any citizens that would like to make germane comments regarding this rezoning from MX1 to MX3 to allow for the restaurant. Yes?
Hi, Marcus Kanan, Ward 1, Beaverdale Neighborhood Association. I just want to say that, you know, the Neighborhood Association is really excited to see some progress at this intersection and at the site specifically, so I think we are supportive of this rezoning. We have heard of some concerns related to the bike lane and multimodal safety related to the additional of the drive-through and the access on Beaver Avenue. So you would just request that as this process moves forward, special consideration be given to enhancing safety at that bike lane intersection with the driveway at Beaver. So, thank you so much. Thanks. Also, I'd just like to thank Bill for bringing this to the neighborhood's attention fairly early on so that we could provide feedback, so thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none?
Seeing none, Mayor. This is, it has been sitting vacant for 12 years now. I remember the first time I had a conversation with John Knapp, and it did not go well. This, it's been identified as one of the key gateways for people coming into the Beaverdale Neighborhood, and this is just the most welcome addition that I think we can put together. Scooter's Coffee Shops, what the proposed thing is, we want to make sure that bicyclists on Beaver do have some safety issues, we will continue to work with that. But, getting this thing done after 12 years of vacancy has really got a good thing going, so I'm gonna move 73, and pursuant to, what is it, 40?
42A.
42A, I'm gonna waive the second and third readings.
Would be a great addition to the neighborhood.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Been a long time coming, Bill. Good work.
Thank you.
Item 74, it's on a city-initiated request to amend Plan DSM creating our tomorrow future land use designation for real property generally located along East 21st Street and Tickner Street between Guthrie Avenue to the north and Interstate 235 freeway to the south from industrial to low-density residential, and to allow the rezoning of the property from I1 Industrial District to N3A Neighborhood District. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Aaron Olson Douglas. Our Development Service Director requires six votes. We will quickly ask if there's any parties in interest regarding this rezoning who live within that 250 feet of this property. Seeing none, let's ask, are there any germane comments to be made by the general public? Okay, here we go.
I like this idea. We need more lower-income housing in the area. My name is, oh, sorry. My name is Heather Armstrong. I'm part of the second ward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none?
I will move item 74A and B.
Items 74A and B have been moved.
Mayor County, this will be a welcome change for the residents here who, this will make it easier for them to get loans to improve their properties. So this is both 74 and, all right, let's see, both 74 and 75.
75, brother.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Now we'll move on to 75. 75 is on city-initiated request to amend Plan DSM creating our tomorrow future land use designation from property generally located in the area bounded by East University Avenue to the north, Interstate 235 to the east and south, and East 15th Street to the west, except parcels fronting along East University Avenue from business park use to low-density residential, and to allow rezoning from EX Mixed Use District to NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is again requested by Aaron Olson Douglas. Our Development Service Director requires six votes. Again, we'll ask if there's any parties in interest who live within that 250 feet of this property, or area, should I say, to be rezoned. Seeing none, are there any germane comments, again, from the general public on this? All right, seeing none, we have motion.
With none, I'll make a motion to approve items 75A and B.
75A and B have been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
76 is on a lease agreement with the Power Boat Club on the River, Inc., for a portion of excess city property located on the north bank of the Des Moines River locally known Council Communication Number 21-552. Again, this is a lease agreement. Anyone want to make any general comments on this? All right?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one concern with this. I'm not a, you know, in the past, this has been a five-year lease. We're now moving to a 10-year lease. I just am generally not a huge fan of long-term leases. I understand they've been a good tenant and a good partner. My preference would be to do a five-year, and if we want to give them an option for renewal, just so that we have flexibility if anything comes up, I'd rather have a five-year with a five-year renewal option on the agreement of both parties than a 10-year lease. I don't know if that's something that we can do, but that is what I would prefer to do from a philosophical perspective.
My suggestion, Your Honor, would be to continue the hearing and approach the covenant without.
How does this all fit in with the water trails?
Can I just sort of have it move it?
So...
Doesn't impact?
No conflict.
Okay.
Question was whether or not it was in conflict with the water trails project, and we're hearing that there is none at this time. Our city attorney has suggested that if we are gonna make this change, that we continue this hearing and present that option to... option to the Des Moines, or the Power Boat Club on the River, Inc., to see if that's acceptable to them to do that.
But, and I would make a motion just to approve item 76.
Linda, here's my thoughts. You know, we, as little kids, used to ride our bikes down there on Birdland. Power Boat Club's been there-
Been there.
-since then. And to say that-
We want to keep-
-five years, I want to tell you, if they want to do some construction and expansion, trying to tie them into five years is not a good thing. One other thing those guys do, you know, there've been people that overturned boats, kayaks, they speed out and rescue them, free of charge. I don't see, we're limiting them to five years, is going to benefit anybody. I agree with Linda. I just go with the proposal as is.
All right, so I think we have a motion here-
I'll move item 76.
-to move item 76.
Your Honor, that's six yes, one no. Motion carries.
Item 77, Second Avenue and Hull Avenue Traffic Signal Replacement Resolution Proving Plan Specifications Form of Contract Documents Engineers Estimate Receiving File Bids and Designating the Lowest Responsible bidder as Iowa Signal, Inc. Wayne Leslie is the president. $166,902.84, Council Communication Number 21-569. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Any comments, counsel, on this? Let's ask the general public if they have any objections to the plans or specs or form of documents or the engineer's estimate or the low bidder. Go ahead.
Do they use IBU union? Do they use IBU union electricians, like when we give bids for traffic signals, stuff like that? Do we prioritize people that have unions?
Do you want to know if they use unions?
She's asking if they use unions, low bid.
Yeah.
We're not able to consider that, to do the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
I'm move item 77 and A.
I think what we ought to do is get our city engineers to address it with her, but the council has no say. We have to accept the lowest responsible bid by law. Thank you. Do we have somebody from engineering that could?
The bids are all posted online, so you can go on there and look.
Afterwards?
We can't consider it.
Okay, we're not debating this. We can't, we can't do anything. We have to accept that bid. But we are going to get an answer for you regarding that, and we'll have engineering come up when they can and either get your name and address and get back in touch with you, or hopefully they can answer your question this evening.
Iowa Signal that won the bid. It's listed on there.
Your Honor, that was seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay.
I have no idea. We can't.
Next item is 78. East 30th Street and East University Avenue Intersection Improvements Resolution Improving Plan Specifications Form of Contract Documents Engineers Estimate Receiving File Bids and Designating the Lowest Responsible bidder as Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation. Timothy Malakot is the president. $719,066 and bill, six cents. Council Communication Number 21-560. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Again, we'll ask if there's any general public objection to the plans, the specifications, the form of the documents, the engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation.
Heather Armstrong, Second Ward. I go, like, through the area. There's no, there's lack of sidewalks over there. We need more sidewalks, so that way, like, people like myself can easily go down the street, especially on the fairground side. There's no sidewalks there. So, we need sidewalks over there.
All right. Did you have any objections to the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder?
Nope, not that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I would move item 78, 78A.
I think we're all pretty excited this is getting done.
Yeah, a lot of this, a long time coming.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 79 is Fifth Avenue and Grand Avenue One Way to Two Way Conversion Resolution Improving Plan Specifications Form of Contract Documents Engineers Estimate Receiving File the Bids and Designating the Lowest Responsible bidder as Jasper Construction Services, Inc. Cliff Rhodes is the president. $2,189,218, Council Communication Number 21-559. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Again, counsel, any comments? Let's open, yeah, go ahead.
I'll just say, I'm excited to get this piece. It's another small piece of Connect Downtown and the two-way conversion. It's going to be a big improvement from a safety perspective and a multimodal perspective. It'll also hopefully help with some of the traffic issues that we experience in the area. So, excited to see this move forward, and after we, I'll move it pending the public comment.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Go ahead.
Taylor Weber, Ward 3. Yeah, so I guess I don't necessarily see the reason that we're using what appears to be like, almost like 1.7 million in TIF funding for this in particular. I also see that our engineering estimate was like somewhere around like 1.6 million, and the bid is over 2 million, so that has me concerned as well, that we're already overpaying for it. Again, a project that I don't think is really going to impact the way TIF money, ideally, we'd have that spent in the community. So, I don't necessarily think our track record of executing on construction, especially downtown, leaves me super confident that we're going to be able to pull this off in a way that doesn't largely disrupt metro traffic and cause problems for people. I hope that's not the case, but seeing that we're using TIF money in this manner and already overestimate is not encouraging.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, I would agree with Josh. This is going to take care of a lot of the traffic issues that we've had down there. It probably needs to go further into the western gateway, but as we move forward, we'll get that done. As far as using any TIF funds, I see this is a really, really good use. Instead of using general fund or CIP money, using the TIF fund that's been generated by all the downtown businesses is very good. So, we appreciate staff doing that.
I think also, it's just the beginning of turning all these streets into two ways, which many people who have experienced downtown loop scooping would appreciate it all the way up and down Locust and Grand. So, this is first phase, and then we go on down, right?
Yeah, and then maybe we can reinstate some of the parking for the downtown businesses as we get rid of some of the, as we make these two-way streets, we can, we eliminated some parking for some of the businesses down there in the evening. We probably need to try to get that back as we, as we help the problem of the traffic that we've had so many complaints down there.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
I don't know what's happening with it.
Item number 80 is Intelligent Transportation Systems, ITS Phase 2 Resolution Improving the Plan Specifications Form of Contract Documents Engineers Estimate Receiving File the Bids and Designating the Lowest Responsible bidder as Iowa Signal, Inc. Wayne Leslie is the president. $1,317,344.90, Council Communication Number 21-572 is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Again, this is the Intelligent Transportation System, Phase 2. Ask if there's any general public comments regarding the specifications, the form of the documents, engineer's estimate, the low bidder designation. Does anybody have any comments on that? All right, seeing none, do we have motion?
I'll move item 80.
Item 80 has been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 81 is on the proposed amendments to the city precinct and ward boundaries and approving the same and approving agreements with Polk County, Warren County, and the city of Norwalk for combined precincts. A is amending the municipal code regarding city precinct. One is the final consideration of the ordinance above to meet statutory guidelines and avoid additional special city council meetings to adopt the ordinance. The waiver of the readings and consideration is requested by the city manager and requires six votes. B is amending the municipal code regarding ward boundaries. One is the final consideration of the ordinance above to meet statutory guidelines and avoid additional special city council meetings to adopt the ordinance, and the waiver of the readings and the considerations requested by the city manager and requires six votes. We'll go ahead and ask, counsel, any comments? First?
I'll move 81A and B.
Okay, it's been moved. Let's ask, are there any interested parties to make germane comments regarding these city council, yeah, ward boundaries?
Hello, my name is Adam, Ward 3, 50309. I understand we're on a tight deadline because of the deadline that the timeline the city set at the November 30th meeting. It's a bit discouraging to see that council is now saying, we really want to avoid special meetings whenever they knew what the timeline was, so we're like rushing this now instead of having to spend more proactive about this and taking more public input, because the public input was strongly towards map one and two. Now, we have map three, and like I said, it's being rushed with these waived readings. So, I understand it's unlikely for council to consider public input so strongly, but I would urge that we look at map two again.
Anyone else?
Taylor Weber, Ward 3. Yeah, echo Adam's comments. We did have a special meeting. Appreciate that, to allow feedback, and almost all the feedback was not on the third map. So, I got a lot of concern with the map as it is. We just had an election where more money was spent for the Ward 3 race than anyone here should be comfortable with, and now we're adding East Village to that same ward, and then the new Market District in the future to that as well. So, it's really unfortunate to see that we're not really addressing the large money disparities that we have going on that could create conflict of interest that we're working through. Also, we did know this timeline, and we're waiving readings and additional readings to get public comment on the maps as well. Again, just saying, this is a once-in-ten-year process that we're choosing to rush through because we were ill-prepared to execute on it. So, I'd really encourage us to open and not pass the speed readings and open this for more additional public comment.
I just wanted to make sure I authority on this. It's 81A1 and B1 is the motion to move, and I think that the maps, when we looked at them, I think adequately cover all the wards, more resemblance to what we did have. Yes, there was a change to put the downtown and east village, but I think those are very contiguous together, and a lot of the issues they each face are very similar. And being the at-large person, we should all, we all have one vote. We all should look at how the betterment of the total city, not just one ward. I appreciate the ward people, but I think every vote we take is for the total city. So, I am happy to move this.
I would agree with Councilwoman Bozum. As far as money being spent on any election or anything like that, there is only one person that represents, and only one vote that would represent the downtown, the east village, and the Market District. You can't do anything with just one vote, and it doesn't matter how much money you raise. It has nothing to do with, with any type of votes that any of us take up here. And I would be happy to support this. I think it's contiguous with the business district down there, and we had plenty of time for any type of comments to us individually as council members. I didn't receive any emails. I talked to all of my neighborhood associations. They were, they were happy with the maps, and so I'm happy to support these.
I'll just say that I have been on this council a while and know that we have representation across this city, and each of them has a bite of the urban area. I did not vote for this the last time, and I'm not going to vote for it this time. I think it's unfortunate that Ward 4 doesn't have a bite of that central city. Seems like all the wards do. Ward 1 has a little piece of it on Second Avenue, on Sixth Avenue, heading into the downtown, and Ward 2 certainly has it coming down to the Botanical Center and some of the other areas. And I just think it's unfortunate. But I will say that this is a better map than one of the ones that was released earlier that really didn't line up appropriately to me by code and the way we should be doing it. But better, I would have preferred, actually, two.
Your Honor, that's six yes, one no. Motion carries.
That completes the hearings. It's 6:09. That takes us back to item 7B. These are public improvements ordering the construction following, and B is the Second Avenue Bridge over the Des Moines River rehabilitation, and the Second Avenue Bridge over the Birdland Drive replacement, receiving the bids of, hopefully, of 119 of 22, and setting the date of hearing of 27 of 22. The engineer's estimate on this is $7,433,771.90, Council Communication Number 21-570. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. This is part of the Second Avenue reconstruction that we're going to be going through in the next three years. It's a key element here. One of the things that, and I know a question came up on this, we're, in anticipation of the Water Trails project, we're going to do something that's unique that hasn't been done in our neighborhoods yet. We've seen it downtown, but we're going to start to see it on the Second Avenue Bridge. We're going to put some multicolored lights on there, so people know when they're crossing in between Ward 1 and Ward 2. Linda and I worked together on this. Multicolored, Scott.
So, black and gold?
Well, now, you're, I think you're picking up what I'm laying down.
Some would prefer cardinal and gold, but you know, what can we say?
Exactly. But, you know, it's going to really set our neighborhoods apart. That's what I got excited about, but I'm more excited that we are getting this bridge redone. That is a two-stage bridge. That means the bridge over Birdland Drive also will be redone, and maybe we can build it just high enough that we can avoid all those crashes going underneath. So, I'm going to move item 7B.
And Bill, thanks for all your work on Second Avenue and Sixth Avenue. You've really been a hard pusher for those improvements.
Thank you, Mayor. I truly appreciate it.
And I know that Linda on the river and receiving it up there in Ward 2, she's, is appreciative also.
Your Honor, that was seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item forty-three. Item forty-three is approving the preliminary terms of agreement of an urban renewal development agreement with HOA EVMF LLC, Heart of America, Chuck Ulrich, for construction of a mixed-use project located at 317 East Sixth. Council Communication Number 21-550. Councilmember Mandelbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think this is a good project, and I do plan to support it. I wanted to flag a couple of issues going forward that I think, one, that is applicable to all development agreements that I'd like to see us address, and I asked the developer about it, but staff hadn't raised it, and that is the issue of verifiable payroll. I know that, I think the majority of the council would like to see us move forward with policy on verifiable payroll. I've worked, and I know Councilmember Westergaard brought the Omaha ordinance to folks' attention. I'd taken some language and suggested what could be a development term that would implement verifiable payroll. I know that staff did not have that in advance to talk about on this particular project, but I want to make sure before there are future projects that bring back preliminary terms to us and final terms that we work through that issue so that we can start adding verifiable payroll language to our development agreements. So I will add that piece as part of my motion. The second is, we recently had a work session on Principal Park and changes that need to be made to accommodate major and minor league baseball. One of those changes is to significantly increase the wall behind center field in the baseball stadium so that the batter's eye doesn't catch the Capitol. We've been protecting the view shed so that the view shed of the Capitol isn't impacted, and now we're going to be changing that based on the request of the folks at baseball. And so I'd like us, because I think this particular project might have been willing to go a story or two higher had they had the capability to do that. So I'd like us minimally to revisit the view shed, and I think we should do a work session on it so that we can see the drawings, minimally do the view shed with the changes that are being contemplated for Principal Park, because if we're altering the view shed, there's no reason to have, to be protecting a view that no longer exists. So minimally, we should accommodate that, and I'd be willing to take a look at other changes, but I'd want all stakeholders to have a say in that process, which is why I think we should do a work session and take a look at what our options would be. So those are two of the things. I will add, for the public listening, in this particular project, we're getting high-quality building materials. It's essentially an all-electric building. I think the only thing they're doing are maybe some decorative gas fireplaces, and they're running a gas line in case there are restaurants in the commercial space. So this is going to be a really nice demonstration about what you can do with all-electric construction. They're going to have really, really high R-values from a building insulation perspective, partly because of the quality materials that they're using. And this is continuation of our policy to get affordability worked into our projects. There are going to be, I think, 10% of the units at 65% of AMI. We still need to, I think, inch up in future projects to get closer to 20%, but this is, again, positive on all those aspects. So with that, I'm happy to move item forty-three with the addition for future development agreements, to have staff work on the verifiable payroll language, and then two, to request a work session to look at view shed requirements going forward and make sure that stakeholders, including the East Village, including the folks at the baseball stadium and who are operating the Iowa Cubs, all can give input so that we have an informed discussion. But now seems like an appropriate time to at least have some discussion about what that looks like.
Right. But Mayor, just real quick, I think Carl and I both had the same text message before the meeting started, that the president of the East Village Neighborhood Association hasn't been contacted about this project, didn't really know much about it, and was eager to come down here. He had a conflict tonight, but I'm hoping that Heart of America staff will give them input of what's being done here, what's being built, parking, and some of their concerns that they've had in the past. So before we, and is it really too early to do the verifiable payroll with this? Is it, because this is just preliminary terms. When we have the terms, couldn't we bring that back with that type of language?
We'd have to negotiate that within the final terms.
Okay. So I hope that's part of your motion, that they will negotiate part of that in the final terms?
Sure. No, it would have to, under the statute, it would have to be done as part of the preliminary terms we're considering now. So you would need to continue this item. If you approve the preliminary terms, that these are, what you're talking about is not part of the preliminary terms. That has not been negotiated. So you'd need to continue this item and direct staff first to come up with the language, then negotiate it, or to do it for future projects, but you can't unilaterally do it on this project.
Let's just do it for future, because I think they might have some contracts already.
Sure. Will the Neighborhood Association have any type of input in this project now that what preliminary terms to me doesn't seem like that we've got anything decided?
It's, the preliminary term language really comes from the statute, and that process, council ultimately has the ability to decide going forward on what it wants to do. But you know, if you want to change your preliminary terms, which is what other competing proposers, for example, would have an opportunity to offer competing proposals, you've got to continue this item and then give staff that direction, and then go back and renegotiate the preliminary terms.
What's your motion?
As previously stated, I'm not making any changes to it. So it's item forty-three with the addition for future preliminary terms that staff come back with the verifiable payroll, and that we do a work session on the view shed.
And can we, you know, we brought this up at the last meeting. Some kind of surprise that we haven't heard anything about it, but we talked about that verifiable payroll, and then we talked also about, you know, making sure that we have 1099 employees, even the subcontractors. I'd like to see that in the, in future agreements.
Erin, do you have a comment?
I just have a clarification on the preliminary terms. This is a privately-owned site, not a city-owned site, so there isn't an urban renewal disposition requirement associated with it.
But we're giving them dollars, their TIP money.
Yes.
And to clarify for council, there is a process set out in the statute, and the statute specifies how you go through that. And if you want to change what you have in front of you, you have to start over. You can't unilaterally change that without getting the preliminary terms agreed to for the statutory process. That's what we're talking about, which you can do that.
I'm not making a motion to do that.
Correct.
I did get, I did get language to staff, not until Friday of last week, on the verifiable payroll, that I thought would be good language based on some of what I'd seen from Councilmember Westergaard and others. I think we're still waiting for a reaction from legal and others to get that working language. But I think we have time between, we didn't have time because the developer hadn't even talked about that language. We didn't have time to do it here, but I think we have time to do it going forward. And so I think because we all want to make sure we get that done, that's why I added that as a piece to do that going forward, so we see that language.
I think that's a good thing to have in there.
And I agree, and I think the bigger challenge for me, and maybe there's somebody here from Heartland, is we went through multiple boards, it looks like, and no one has even talked to the Neighborhood Association, because he didn't know anything about it. Yep, I just, I-
Hi, Jenny Drake, Heart of America Group. We have reached out to the East Village Neighborhood Association two times now, asking to be on their, their next board meeting agenda. Have not heard back. One of the secretary, Cassie Sampson, is the secretary of the association. We also reached out to her again today to schedule a meeting to discuss the proposed plans.
Okay.
I can follow up with the emails if you would like.
All right, we've got a motion. Don't you're the only one that didn't vote?
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Next item is item fifty-three. Councilmember Gray asked to have this one pulled. Again, it's authorizing the city manager to negotiate a development agreement based on preliminary terms with Merge Urban Development and Drake University for the construction of a $25 million, 108,000 square foot mixed-use development at the southeast corner of 25th Street and Carpenter Avenue across from Drake University. Council Communication Number 21-563. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great addition for this Drake area. Josh and I were down at, and I think Connie, you were down too. Yeah, we're down at the twenty, yeah, University right across the street from there. There's a lot of excitement, a lot of buzz going on with all that area around Drake. This is just going to be the crowning jewel for the whole thing. This is part of that Opportunity Zone request we put in about two or three years ago. Never thought it was going to go anywhere, and here we are, getting to vote on it. So like working with our great partners at Drake University, Drake Neighborhood Association's highly supportive of this. So I want to move item fifty-three, and let's go forward to keeping this neighborhood one of the crown jewels we've got in the city of Des Moines.
Also, also comes back on our tax rolls too, I believe, from, it was from Drake University, so I think it's a great asset, not only to the neighborhood, but it also would be a great asset for the city.
Absolutely.
In other ways than just having a nice area.
Drake has been a really good partner, and in all of these projects that have gone on around the university, I mean, we've seen it on the university corridor with Canary Lofts, the mixed-use hotel, that we're adding retail, we're adding housing, we're adding health care with the Broadlawn's Clinic. They've done a lot to help transform that corridor, and it's going to be a much more vibrant area, and it's going to have a lot more from a retail perspective, from a services perspective, and it all ties into one of the highest-use transit routes in the entire, in the entire city as well. So it's a great step. I'm excited to see this project, and you know, it wouldn't happen without Drake being a great partner, without Bill, your doggedness on this, and look forward to seeing what Doug-
Thank you, Josh.
All right.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item fifty-four is directing the city manager to negotiate an amendment to the 2080 agreement for construction and funding of the Fluor Drive underpass between Des Moines Waterworks and the Des Moines Waterworks Park Foundation and the City of Des Moines regarding the amount of foundation funding thereafter. Council Communication Number 21-553. Councilmember Mandelbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to address several things with this particular item. This was one of the first public-private partnerships since I came on the council, and there are a lot of really great things about the work that Des Moines Waterworks Foundation has done as part of this project. The facilities there are really impressive. The Ruon Connector, I think, has, it's been a great connection between Graves Lake and the Waterworks Park. The natural playscape there has quickly become, I think, a really popular destination, one of my kids' personal favorites as well. But whenever we go there, we see lots of other kids playing and taking advantage. So I'm really happy with the asset. I have several concerns that I want to make sure get addressed as part of this process, one of which, you know, I think all of us were maybe a little bit surprised by this, because when this first came to council, this was going to be a, and part of what we were able to say is this was not something where city dollars would be used, and that this was going to be privately fundraised. And my understanding is that there was a lead donation from the Ruons of 2.1 million, which was a substantial lead in the naming, the naming gift. And as of right now, the city's only received 1.4 million. So that discrepancy and understanding what has been done to date is a concern, because I don't want anyone to think that we're okay with public-private partnerships backsliding. And then the other piece that I want to address is I think, when we talked about it, and Sam and I had conversations early on in the process, I asked, you know, are there going to be problems from a sound perspective and a noise perspective in the neighborhood? And I was assured that that wouldn't be the case. And the experience has been a little bit different on that. And I know we worked to adopt our sound ordinance to be specific to the unique factors of this specific location. My understanding from communication with staff, based on the data that we collected on the events in late summer and this fall, is that there were multiple, multiple violations of even that sound ordinance. And so I want to make sure as we work through this, and I want to continue working with the Waterworks Foundation and to move things forward, but I want to make sure that those issues are addressed as well. And I think staff have identified that it is possible to design sound absorption equipment that will hopefully address some of the issues that we're experiencing in the neighborhoods. And I will tell you, as I knocked doors this summer, I mean, I had people north of I-235 that told me about hearing, hearing the concerts. And it's not every time, but it is widespread and something that I think we need to address to make sure we get that balance right going forward. So I am happy to move this item, but I want to give further direction than what is just in, just there at the moment. One, I want to make sure that before any renegotiated agreement comes back to us, at a minimum, the commitment of dollars that the Ruons obligated are already to the city, so that that dollar, those dollars are reflected. I think it's fine to say up to, but I'm not sure that the amount that we're authorizing is necessarily the right amount. And I think that maybe depends on how we resolve some of these other issues. And then I want to make it third contingent on a plan, a plan to address the sound issues with, with actual timeline, if it's, if staff recommends sound absorption equipment, with actual timeline included there as well. recommends sound absorption equipment, with actual timeline included there as well. So before any of those things, before any final agreement comes back to us, those things are all addressed. And that, that is the direction that I would like us to, to give with this specific proposal. So with that, that would be my motion, is to add those things, and appreciate, happy to have further conversation about any of this.
Anybody have any comments? Counsel?
Well, so, this motion is about the Ruon Connector and not about concert sounds. So, so I'm not sure why we're stirring those two together. I mean, if there's a, a separate-
Well, if, if we're-
If there's a separate issue regarding sound, let's do that as a separate direction to the city manager's staff, but let's try to keep this clean about funding for the Ruon Connector.
Well, it, it would be nice if we could keep the funding clean, but I don't think that's what's happened to date. I mean, you know, we haven't even seen the Ruon donation yet, and that, that's part of this. I, I mean, the Ruon donation was for 2.1 million. The city has only received 1.4 million as of, as of at least what was reflected in the blue letter. So those are the facts, as I understand them, and as have been communicated to me by the city manager.
Well, we're getting a "no, that's not correct" nod from Sam, so there's something that's not, I don't know if you want Sam to come to the microphone and explain more detail?
Well, I think, well, I guess, too, at the end of it, I just want to speak about the noise, because I was going to say they should be separate, but to, right now, we know we have a noise issue, because I knocked some of those same doors, I think. I was walking past, and people were, you know, especially when it was a Sunday night at 10 o'clock after school started, and people couldn't get kids to bed. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying there's a definite noise issue going on, and I appreciate, but we, I think, if we are violating our own policy that we set in place on noise ordinance, then we do have to take, we've got to figure out a way to do that and get it corrected. So if-
And-
So I'm just saying, it is, it is an issue. I know that, I know that you can say, well, you know, this came later. It's different when you're living in an area that always had a lot of noise, but this came later, and we've created an issue for not only just small neighborhood, but it really has been widespread. But-
Yeah. And I will add, we're talking about putting in another, we're talking about putting in close to $600,000 of city dollars that were not part of this project from the get-go. And if we're going to put in that kind of money, I want to make sure that we're fixing the sound issue as well. Now, if, if they're going to honor the commitment that they made from the get-go, then we can, then we can separate it out, and we can talk about how the city contributes to the sound ordinance, but that's not what the ask is on the table. And so if we're going to be helping out with the dollars that are owed to the city, I want to make sure that we are getting the issues resolved as well. And so, it's all, it's giving the manager that additional direction, so that he can make sure that all of these issues are solved, and we're not dealing, we're not dealing with continued, continued issues. Because I do think it's an asset to the community. I want to see, I want to see it continue to be successful, and I, I just want to make sure we get all of the balance right with this. So, that, that is, that is the motion.
So as we, as we talk about the connector, and when we, when we talk about it, it was put in for safety reasons. I mean, it was $3.5 million for safety. I mean, it's going to save people's lives from crossing Fluor Drive. If anyone would have told us at the very beginning that we would only had to pay $500,000 or $574,000 to complete the project, I think we would have been all in. So, I mean, it, taking that into consideration, I'm not sure what happened with any type of funding or donations. I don't know anything about that. If, I've never heard the Ruons of not fulfilling their commitment. I would, I would hope that-
The Ruons did. We just didn't necessarily see it.
Get all the money.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I don't, I don't know the whole backstory of all of that. I just know, for a safety perspective and amenity perspective for our city, this amenity is awesome. And if anyone would have came to us three or four years ago when, when this came up and said, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to come with $3 million. You guys are going to come with $500,000," and ultimately, it does, it is going to save lives. People aren't crossing that, they're riding their bikes under the underpass, they're, they're walking under the underpass, and as you well know, it's being used tremendously.
It's a tremendous asset.
It's awesome. So, I don't know what, what happened. As far as the sound and the connector, I mean, I understand you're directing Scott, and, and that does need to be taken care of, but I don't know how we, we, we mix them both together. And I, and I'm supportive of, of your motion, but I don't know how Scott's going to come up with terms of whether, how they fix the sound problem, or we give them the $574,000. I don't know how that's going to work. I don't know how you mix that, but I understand the reason that you're asking for that, because we all hear the sound. It doesn't matter if you're north of the interstate or south of the, of the park. When there's concerts being played, it, we knew that that was going to happen, and if anyone thought that that wasn't going to happen, no matter what you do with the sound, you're, you're going to hear music. It's a, I mean, it's a, it's an amphitheater. I mean-
Well, and there are-
Concert location.
There are other concerts in the back part of the park, in the big circle that's closer to Isaac Walton, so it's-
Right.
All this is getting stirred in together. The Lord's in Stage is getting blamed for some of those other events, so I would prefer we keep this just as clean as we can. There's, there are very, there's different readings on, on what grants were awarded for a, a passage underneath Fluor Drive, and that was diverted for another project. And so this really helps correct part of that, so.
Maybe we need to see where the money is.
Well, it, it was a project that costs more than the Ruons originally gave.
I just, I just hope that we're, we don't think that we're going to solve the sound problem, or we're not going to give you the $574,000. If that's what we're directing Scott to do, then I'm going to have to change my vote. But if we're, if we're talking about coming up with a solution together of how we're going to fix it, okay, I, I understand that we have a, we, we can do that, but it can't be one or the other. And if that's what we're asking Scott to do, and I don't know if that's kind of your, part of your motion, then, you know, I mean, I, I understand we got to keep it clean, but we can, we can bring that discussion together.
Well, it's all going to have to come back to the council again, anyway.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we're solving, we're solving the sound issue as part of this global solution, because if we're looking at putting dollars in, I'd rather put the dollar, like, I don't want to, if they're saying they're having fundraising issues, and they can't fundraise for whatever sound absorption equipment, I'd rather us put the dollars towards the sound absorption than, and, and figure things out. But we, we've got, I think, direction to, to Scott, and if, if this isn't sufficient direction, he can come back with additional terms.
So, basically, you're asking, could we just-
Solve both.
Okay. So, we're going to say, we're going to approve this expenditure to cover the cost, and you want a plan in place when it comes back that solves the issues that are coming out of the noise?
But, we're, we're giving him the flexibility to negotiate it?
Right, yes.
I, I, I mean, this isn't approving it, because it isn't negotiated yet.
Right. That's, I'm just saying that they-
And we're, we're saying that that needs to also include solving the sound issue, because if the answer on the sound issue is, well, we don't have the dollars for it, now is the time to address both together.
And nobody knows any idea what a sound buffer would cost.
We, we haven't figured any of that out yet.
But the other thing beyond a sound buffer is just to book bands that don't play.
Well, how are you going to buffer sound when it's outside?
I mean, how do you, I mean, wouldn't it be the easiest, is to make sure the bands stay within, under the decimals that we have set, and also that you don't have concerts at 10 o'clock on Sunday night?
You have an amphitheater.
Or 11, so I'm just saying.
So, so we're already asking the foundation to raise money to replace the bridge across the Raccoon River that's in Waterworks, so that's another ask of this nonprofit group. We're, we're stacking a few more items on this. Wow.
So, on the bridge, if it's within the Waterworks Park, what is Waterworks? I'm sorry.
Well, so, the-
Why does the foundation take-
The Waterworks trustees cannot ask the ratepayers to replace a bridge across the Raccoon River. So, that's going to have to be asked within the community to raise money to replace this key bridge that's part of our-
Trail system.
Trail network, so.
Or the city pays.
Pardon?
Or us, or we pay for it.
Well, that's what the foundation will have to go, whether that's writing grants and raising money privately to replace that bridge that's a key element of our trails, so. Did I state that correctly, Scott?
Yeah, it's on their property, and so-
But you're asking as part of renegotiating the 28E that-
To get started on that.
To get started into Phase Two of raising money. First, we've got to get Phase One paid for, which is, or we, the, the foundation needs to get Phase One paid for, and that's what we're, item 54 is about, so.
Does this make it whole, what we're giving, does this make Phase One whole?
No. Well, they still have another, roughly another half million, but this is-
I was going to make sure I-
This gets us, that gets the foundation closer to closing the gap and getting it wrapped up.
So, what is the time that, that we can have these concerts down? Though I know we've, we've talked about this before, as far as sound. You're saying that they're playing music at Sunday night at, at 11 o'clock?
During September. On Sep-, it was maybe till 10, but it was a school night.
They go until 10.
So-
10 o'clock? Is that it for all concerts? Sam, I see it's Jake?
11 on weekends, on a school night. It's a, a 11 o'clock on weekends, which is less than the sort of, sort of-
I mean, that's, I mean, if we're going to have an outside venue, I mean, that's, that's somewhat reasonable. I mean, that's very reasonable to have an outside, it's, you're never going to be able to stop neighbors from hearing music. It's just not going to happen.
You're not going to-
It's not going to happen. I mean, we're dreaming if we think that we're going to be able to have an outside concert, and no one, only then the people at Waterworks Park are going to hear it.
I think it's the level.
That is true. There's just-
The level of noise.
As someone who's in the neighborhood, there's a, there's noticeable difference between various concerts, and it, and we've not managed to get that balance right. And not, not every concert is the same. And I can tell you, the ones that are furthest off on the balance, I get a lot more complaints than some of the others. So, so we've got a, we've, we can figure out how to get this balance a little bit better. That, that's, that's what I'm asking to get done, and we didn't get it done last year, so my hope is that we can get it done for this year.
And, and my thoughts are, people who live in the area deserve to be able to have their peace and quiet. And if, if the Waterworks Foundation is the one that's managing the concerts, and they're the ones that are asking for money for the bridge, then I think it would be appropriate for us to bring the two together and say, "We're not going to give you any money, just so you can, we have to come to a resolution so the neighbors are satisfied." I, I don't think our residents would be happy that we're spending money for something that we told them that we weren't going to pay for, and now we're being asked to. So I know Josh has got something on the table. Is that acceptable?
Would you like to restate that again?
He says, "Dr. Scott, to talk to them about the noise and the money that we're going to get."
Okay, got it. I just wanted to make sure.
It's pretty simple, I mean-
Yeah.
Right? I mean, we're not setting-
Sam, I will say, do you want to say anything?
I just want to clarify, there's some misinformation around the-
You want to step to the microphone, Sam?
Bill, 4340 Allison Avenue. Thank you, Bill, for serving our word for so long. I represent the Des Moines Waterworks Park Foundation. I just want to clarify a couple things that weren't quite accurate in that. The Ruon, and it, it put the Ruons, I think, in a bad light, or it sounded like it put in the foundation, and neither are true. The Ruons pledged over $2 million to the Waterworks Park Foundation, not specifically all to the Ruon Connector, and that's verified, I think I've even shared some of those letters with Scott. The naming rights for the Ruon Connector was at $1.5 million, and they've certainly fulfilled that part of the pledge. As you can imagine, when we're dealing with these big amount of money, most of them are spread out over years. So we've not received all of that $2 million pledge. I want to make that very clear. They're not outstanding, it's just part of a five-year commitment that they've made to us. All of our money is kept at the community foundation and gone through there, so Linda, just, or I'm sorry, Councilman Westergaard, just to be clear, there's not a money not being appropriated incorrectly. It's all kept there for those very reasons, and we're very careful about how we deal with our donors' dollars. So I just wanted to clarify that.
If I could, actually, I think we have to agree to disagree on how the, the $2 million, the documents that I had read from Sam. The key here is that the obligation is to come up with the rest of the funding, minus an amount. Right now, the, the starting point in discussion is this $540,000. And I really appreciate that, that there are a lot of other projects going on, and so that the Waterworks Foundation is pushing a lot of different projects forward. So let's keep an eye on the fact that there is more fundraising that needs to be done, and an opportunity to get to the finish line with, with some commitment from the city.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I appreciate that clarification. What I, well, and I would appreciate, I mean, I asked Scott to see the letter that he has, and maybe that's something that you would share, but my understanding was there was a, I didn't know that the commitment was over time, so not all the dollars are in yet. So that, that, that is helpful, and that may be correct some of what, what I said earlier, so I hope the record will reflect that, to the extent those dollars aren't in, that's, that explains why the city hasn't seen those dollars as well. So thank you for that correction. But I hope, as those additional dollars come in, because my understanding is, is that they were directed, if the Ruon Connector wasn't fully fundraised for or paid for, that they were directed to go there first, I hope that, that is taken into account as part of this, but I think everything else still stands. So thank you for that correction.
And, and remember, this is, the, the connector, while that's part of the city, our agreement with the city, it's part of a 3.1 million of a $13 million project that, you know, I appreciate your enjoyment of what we've done there, so.
Yes.
It's a big cap.
It's a good project, and appreciate all the work. It's just-
Thank you for allowing me to clarify that.
Sam is a, a listener here this evening, but also a listener of those bass tones. That seems to be a, where, at least in my part of the neighborhood, which is way west of where Councilmember Mandelbaum is, I got to tell you, at 10:30, 11 o'clock, I'm hearing a "ba-boom, ba-boom, ba-boom." If they could tone that part down of it, that would take care of a lot of the-
A lot of the emails.
A lot of the emails, and, and walk-bys that, that say, "Hey, did you hear that last night? What are you going to do about it?" So, anyway, let's see what we can do to work on-
Believe me, I, I appreciate, I am not immune to friends in the neighborhood getting ahold of me. They all have my cell phone as well. You know, we had a lot less complaints-
I know something about rock and roll, buddy.
After the adjustment that we worked through the city with before. We did have some atmospheric things that really, that wind blowing out really does drive that, but you're right, and, and we did adjust that. I am not aware of violations, but I do know there were certain concerts that were louder than others. And I think, you know, we, we reduced the amount of complaints from the first year in 2019- in 2019, certainly to this year. I'm assuming we will continue to dial it in for next year as well.
Okay. All right. Where are we? We've got a motion, I think.
So what's the motion? We talked about this a while, so, so what's our motion at this time?
Why don't Scott, why don't you read the, read what you think it is and I'll correct if, if it isn't captured appropriately.
Yeah, so, well, should I or should I have him?
Well, I mean, if you've got it, that's fine.
Okay, I want to make sure that I can. So it would be to move the item with approval with three stipulations. The first of which is to have, I'm paraphrasing here now at this point, a better understanding of money already received, which would include Ruon's funds that were meant for this project, that those funds have been transferred to the city before the item gets brought, before the agreement gets brought back. That's the first one. The second one is more of a desire in the sense that this is direction, that the $540 is a number that you would have liked to have seen lesser. So I, I guess that's not necessarily a stipulation, just guidance.
It's an up to.
Up, okay, the, the language would change.
Not a, not a, not an, not an absolute.
Okay. And then the third was to resolve the sound issues before bringing it back.
And we're not agreeing to pay this tonight. We're just agreeing to, to-
Correct.
Have you bring the 28E back to us.
Right. Yeah.
So, just a, kind of a hypothetical question. I wonder if we can't solve the sound problem? Are we not going to give them the 500? Is your recommendation going to come back? We're, we're tying this together with the sound issue. So is your, so you would come back with the recommendation of not supporting the $547,000?
I-
Because if that's the case, I, we need to change, I need to change my vote.
Yeah.
Because I'm not going to mix and match. I mean, I do want the sound issue to be fixed, but I don't want it contingent on helping them fundraise and to get this connector completed. Because it is an amenity that we've all said that we love, and it is a safety issue that we did finally get taken care of. And it's a-
Understood.
Very good amenity that we have. I know 547 is, is a large amount, but with the big picture of $13 million project there, that's, that's pretty minimal for a public, public-private partnership.
Can I make the suggestion then?
Plus for the amount of people, plus for the amount of people that are using it. You know, it's like the most used park we have.
Right. Right. So, so explain to me that, because if that's the case, I'm going to need to-
I think I can avoid that.
Okay, good.
Councilman, in, I have every, every, I'm very optimistic we're going to be able to solve this quickly on the sound and put a plan together that will, will satisfy. Okay?
Okay.
So we can work on that immediately, such that with the other terms and getting the agreement put together, we could have the sound resolved before this would need to come back to you.
Okay.
So if there is an issue, I can talk to you after that point, if, if we even have to pass that bridge.
And at the time when you bring it back is when we can discuss it again and determine how we want it to vote.
Yes.
We can vote for it now, wait for your information, and then make a, more informed on how we're proceeding on the issues that Councilman Manalbaum brought up. Right?
Okay. Then I'll support it.
Josh, are you fine with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. This takes us now to item 82. Item 82 is amending chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. This is council communication number 21-540. A, traffic control modification on Illinois Street and Indiana Avenue. B is a parking modification to accessible parking space on Maple Street between East 18th Street and 19th Street. C is a code correction on a traffic control at Ankeny Avenue and East 22nd Street. D is a code correction, accessible parking space on East Glenwood Drive between Southeast 14th Street and Southeast 17th Street. E is a code change to match field conditions and remove loading zone on the north side of Wallen Street between 14th Street and 15th Street. Any motion or conversation?
I'll move 82, I'll move 82A, B, C, D, and E.
All right. Do you want to waive, do we need a second and third on this one?
According to 42A, the rule of 42A, we waive.
Okay, motion's been made?
Yes, great. Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 83 is amending chapter 135-8.3.2 relating to, relating to stormwater management. A is a final consideration of ordinance above the waivers requested by Aaron Olson-Douglas, the Development Services Department Director. The waiver requires six votes. And B is to receive and file communications from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mayor, since this is my last meeting, and stormwater is one of the things I ran on, I'd like to move 83A and B.
All right.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. We have one more part of our city council meeting needs a request to speak. For those wishing to speak this evening, under our public speaking, we will just say that we will be calling on those who have registered to speak, and we have four on this evening. And let's start with Carol Maher. Is Carol here?
Your Honor, she, she texted that she would not be here.
All right. Adam Kellinen.
Hello, my name is Adam Kellinen. I use he/him pronouns, and I live in Ward Three. I wanted to talk first on that the city is evicting and bulldozing houseless camps still. It's cruel and inhumane, especially during the winter. And just in the past week, there were six camps that were bulldozed and evicted, including the day before the big storm, which tells me not just that the city has really just, I don't even have words for how cruel that is, but also as a lot of us were preparing for the brunt of the storm, the city was spending its time and money and workers on bulldozing houseless camps, which I think is just, I really don't have words for it. Especially with the proclamation before this, where we give an award to Joppa, that's, it, I, I really have a hard time talking about this, especially right now. I'm just going to go on to the next point. The city is not open to announce warming centers for this winter, which is especially terrifying because last year a person froze to death outside of a closed warming center. So that seems like something that the city should be trying to not repeat. I've found no information about those. If it is, city needs to highlight that information. And also, we know that to speak in a city council meeting, you have to have an address, which means the people who are actually affected by these camps being bulldozed aren't even allowed to speak per council rules, which I think makes it especially gross that we gave an award to somebody in charge of a nonprofit instead of actually bringing members from the houseless community in to talk about and advocate for themselves. They're literally not allowed to speak in these meetings. I just want to highlight that. Other ways the city means are inaccessible. Holding in-person only meetings during a surging pandemic and even in extreme weather last year, last week was really inappropriate. We need a virtual option now or entirely virtual meetings. We also need sign language interpreters. We need translators. The city is also rejecting accommodation requests from people that I know who are trying to speak. The city is also just rejecting normal requests to speak. Like, I'm not, I've never figured out why that's happening. But yeah, they just deny a lot of people, the public reports, like the time I'm speaking now. And the city is paying cops and private security to treat residents as threats. That money-
Our next speaker is Denver Foot. Is Denver here? Denver Foot. Don't see Denver. Jolene Prescott.
My name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 30133rd Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50313, and I'm in Ward Two. And I want to talk about rights that we have. We have the right to speak here, and this is wonderful. But there's something that goes with our right to speak. We have rights and, what is that? You learn about it in school. Rights and responsibilities. We need to be responsible speakers here. And there are certain things that we do that are our responsibility. For one, when we sign up, we need to show up. For two, we have no slander. Three, we need to keep our topics germane. Four, we need to honor those time limits, because that's our responsibility as speakers. And we don't want to interrupt others. You know, I admit, I'm kind of bad at that because when I see people not being germane or going over their time limit, I tend to say something. Something else I've noticed too. A few times, we have had profanity spoken here in this hall. Now, that doesn't stay in this hall, though. This is on a live stream, going out to families and going out into television sets. Parents should not have to worry when they're having a city council meeting on their TV that someone's going to say the F-word or something like that. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. I don't know if it's protected by the First Amendment. But is it a responsible thing to do? It's up to us to show responsibility. And if we're not going to show responsibility, that's when we lose something of our rights. It weakens our rights when we don't show responsibility. So that's what I'm going to ask in the new year, that people who speak here need to show responsibility. Thank you.
That's our last speaker for this evening.
I'll move 84 to receive and file.
Yep. We've got a motion to receive and file. All comments by speakers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We have received and will file.
Mayor, my last comment to make is I move we adjourn.
You are recognized and we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending. Have a great holiday and stay safe.